I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every due and justice for all.
All members of the city council are present with the exception of Mayor Bob Morgan. The copy of the open's meeting act is posted in the meeting room as accessible to members of the public. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items of the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the seated council. It will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member's show a request. Item A, approve agenda as submitted. B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on May 19th, 2025 as on file at the city clerk's office. E, approval of treasurer's report and claims of the amount of $630,394.51. F, approval of Boswell report of claims in the amount of $226,449.85. Item G, approval of pay request number five in the amount of $207,208.80 to Genius Contracting Group for the Boswell South MSW landfill site entrance facility project. Item H, approval of the bid of the West Court Street Water Main Crossing project to Judge Brothers Construction in the amount of $415,000 as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item I, award of the bid for the Chautauqua Park Playground Improvements 2025 to Play Pro Recreation LLC in the amount of $205,586. Item J, award the bid for fire hose replacement 2025 project to McQueen in the amount of $105,881. Item K, approval of the manager application for Adam Lovegren, license number B97463 in connection with the Farmers Cooperative Doing Business as Farmers Cooperative, 615 North Sixth Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. Item L, approval of special designated license for Good Living LLC for Cornhole Tournament fundraiser on June 11th, 2025 from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM at 205 North 19th Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. Item M, resolution number 7562, executing the agreement between the city and the permitting and engineering division within the Nebraska Department of Environment and Energy pursuant to Title 179 NAC 7 as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item N, resolution number 7563, executing the add-on to Gateway Services Master Agreement between the city and Express Bill Pay for the provision of a forms builder feature as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item O, resolution number 7564, appointing Anthony Brockman to the firefighters retirement committee. Item P, resolution number 7565, executing the fixed base aerial applicator's agreement and operator's lease and service agreement with Precision Aerial Ag LLC for the purpose of conducting aerial applicator or crop spraying services and conducting aeronautical services at the Beatrice Airport airfield. Item Q, resolution number 7566, entering into an interlocal cooperative agreement establishing the mutual finance organization. Is there any item a council member would like removed from the agenda?
Mike, I'm not against any of that stuff. I just have had a couple of people ask me questions about I, so I'd like Tobias, maybe sometime here, however you want to do it, kind of explain what we're doing out there a little bit.
Sure, so item I, the Chautauqua Park Playground Improvements, that is part of our RCRP grant that we were awarded to update numerous playgrounds around our community. This one, we removed a playground that was down by the campground in the Chautauqua Park area. That one had been there, I think since the eighties is what Mark had told me. And so instead we're moving, the new playground will go up by the tabernacle and the restrooms up in that area, up on top of the hill. We went out for bids and the low bid, and the only bid we received, was Play Pro Recreation for the amount you see there tonight.
Yep, thanks.
Mr. Fairbanks?
I move that all the items under the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
And your vote, please.
Second.
Need a second.
Second.
You're fine. Now we'll vote.
And your vote, please. That passes.
Eight zero.
Eight zero.
Yep.
Next item will be public hearing. We announce a public hearing will now be held on the acquisition of real property from Hoppy and Sons LLC legally described as follows. All lots 23 and 24, South Beatrice, in addition to City of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, parcel ID number 014419000.
So yes, it's those two lots that have come back yet again, right? These are the two lots down and started school that we traded several times back and forth with Hoppy. We had this public hearing the first time, April 7th of this year. However, our notice did not get published in the paper. They missed it, and so we'll come back and have the public hearing tonight. Again, we're acquiring these two lots initially. We had, we got them from the school as part of our agreement. We had transferred these to Hoppy. And then for the RCRP grant, the state wanted us to own them, so Hoppy transferred them back to us, which is why we're acquiring them to put a playground back on the same site where the playground was at before. Now that you have received bids on Chautauqua and Frobury Park, we're working on putting bid documents together for this particular playground.
Any questions from the council?
All right, I'd move that the public hearing be closed at 6:06 PM.
Second.
And your vote, please. House is eight zero. Move to resolutions. Resolution number 7567, committing the city to respond to the current crisis in roadway fatalities by taking a substantial and comprehensive action to reduce serious and fatal injuries on roadways of Beatrice to zero by December 31st, 2032.
I was waiting for you, Mike, to do that. I apologize.
Mike, will this help?
Thank you. I moved the resolution 7567 to pass and adopted.
Second.
So we did our Safe Streets for All Action Plan that we put together here, our safety plan that we put together. When we submitted that off to the federal government, the federal highway department for them to review it, one of the things they came back with, although it's not any of their documents anywhere, is they want us to actually set a deadline for us to have a goal in order to achieve a death-free roadway, if you will. And so with that, they said we could do a number of ways. Resolution was one of those. So what you have tonight is a resolution saying the city's going to make every effort to attempt to have roadways that are safe and we have no fatalities on our, by December 31st of 2032. You may ask, why 2032? By that point, we should have finished the re-striping of Highway 77 that we talked about. The highway rerouting of Highway 136 should be completed. And if we were successful getting the grants that we're applying for today for the Lincoln Street corridor, that project should be wrapped up at that point as well. And so that's why we picked December 31st, 2032. Your next question is, what happens if we don't meet that deadline? Nothing.
Nothing.
Going to be my question. That whereas right there is pretty blunt. Okay.
Any other discussion from the council? From the public? Not your vote, please. That passes eight zero. Moving to resolution B. Resolution number 7568, executing the memorandum of understanding with the Beatrice Community Hospital and Health Center, Inc. to facilitate the timely transfer of patients from 4800 Hospital Parkway, Beatrice, Nebraska, 68310 to other medical facilities.
Mayor, I move that resolution 7568 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Discussion.
Earlier this year, Beatrice Community Hospital approached Chief Dekey and myself about some of their concerns with regards to patients being transferred out of their hospital. So today, if, not only do we transfer patients, transport patients to their hospital, but if BCH has a patient there that needs to be transported someplace else, they call Beatrice Fire Department and we, if we have staffing available, we'll transport them to the next facility that they need to go to. We reviewed their numbers. We're not sure that there was a whole lot of missed calls, but they were concerned that they were missing any, obviously due to patient care and some of that stuff. And so we sat down with the union and the fire captains and came up with a plan, if you will, to try to accommodate and help alleviate some of those problems we have with callbacks. Today, what happens is we have eight guys on duty, men and women on duty. Usually seven of them are there. Usually somebody's on vacation or sick leave or something else every time. And as vehicles start to go out, you start to get below minimum staffing. When that occurs, the captains put out a call to all off-duty firefighters to see who was willing to come in and help cover staffing for a time period until we get other people back into the facility. As you can imagine, as kids get older, you know, weather gets nicer, it's difficult sometimes to draw people back in on their days off. And so one of the things we came up with is the policy. Here, we're much like our utility guys. We will provide an opportunity for our firefighters to volunteer to carry a phone. They'll mandatory come back in on a front 12 or a back 12 shift, and they'll get paid for that time. So not only they'll get paid for when they come in pursuant to union contract, but they get a little extra stipend for saying, yes, I'm willing to take that call for the first 12 hours of today. Obviously, there's a cost to that. That cost, if you, if everybody fills every shift as about $146,000 in a year, BCH has agreed that they'll reimburse us for all those costs. So the agreement we have here before you is an MOU with the hospital laying out that, hey, we're going to, the city's going to adopt the policy to try to alleviate some of our callback concerns. The hospital's agreed to pay us back, I think it's quarterly, for any money that we have out for these particular callbacks. But yet it does not obligate the city to have to take their transfers if we don't have staffing available.
When the firefighter gets called back, is, will they be paid a minimum?
So yes, pursuant to union contract, if they respond back, they get a minimum of two hours of overtime. They may be there for 15 minutes, they may be there for two hours, but they get a minimum of two hours for being there.
And that falls to Chief Dekey to enforce all of this? I mean, if you have, let's say that you have somebody that signs up, they fail to do that. I mean, he's got a program, that's not something that falls to you as management.
Correct, no. We have a policy that we've drafted for the fire department that they'll adopt. It has those provisions, how you sign up, what happens if you don't come back, those type of things.
And the 146T, that's commensurate with the workload then, it sounded like you said?
Yes, so if you figure two guys could go on the front 12, two guys go on the back 12, so there's four guys per day, $100 for each one of them, for, times 365, you get to $146,000.
Should pay for it.
Well, that's the maximum, right?
That's the absolute maximum.
You're only going to charge, of course, if that's necessary.
Yep.
Other discussion from the council? From the public? If not, your vote, please. That passes eight zero. Resolution D, resolution number 757, executing the forbearance agreement and any and all other documents.
You skipped C.
Nope, you skipped one.
Oh, sorry. Off one.
Bob does that too, don't miss him.
He was just saying if we were one.
Resolution number 7569, entering to the emergency dispatch service interlocal agreement with the county of Gage, Nebraska, to operate a countywide enhanced 911 system and a radio dispatching system on behalf of the county of Gage for the term ending June 30th, 2030.
Mayor, I move the resolution 7569 to be passed and adopted.
Second.
Discussion.
The city and county have had a joint 911 dispatch service for a number of years. We provide that service for Gage County. Our current contract is set to expire here, and so what we have before you tonight is a five-year contract that would automatically renew for another five-year term unless either party gives notice. The first year would be $246,000, just a little bit under that. That is a 2% increase from the amount that they're paying currently. And then after that, this contract calls for a 2.5% increase every year thereafter during the life of the contract. It also cleans up a little bit of language in there with regards to IT services. Some of that stuff we had put in there over the years. We have some new IT staff, they looked at it, they had to change a little bit of the terminology in there and just clarify exactly where our services end and where the county services begin to make that sure that was clear in there. The other thing we had talked about was service level agreements. One thing we'd like to get to is different levels of service that organizations could buy into. If you just want to dispatch, or if you want dispatch and CAD or all those things, it gives us an opportunity to create those service level agreements. And if we do, the county has an opportunity to change what service level they're currently being provided with a 30-day notice to us. So we tell them the plan they have today is the platinum plan. If tomorrow they decide they want to go down to the gold standard, or silver, or bronze, or however we come up with, or wherever we call them, they would have the opportunity to do that. They're not locked into their current plan if they would so desire.
Well, I'm thrilled to death that you've got a five-year contract. I, you know, the one-year contracts, the two-year contracts, what a hassle. And it's just, it's better to long-term planning financially for us. But I, you know, personally, I would like to see this longer term than that, but I can commend you on getting it to five years, so.
What's our position on this, T, right now? Have they voted on this?
They have not.
Okay, they've seen it, I'm sure, though.
After you guys approve it tonight, we'll send it to them and hopefully they'll put it on their next county board meeting.
Yep, I want to echo his thought because all of us know how much time we've heard that Tobias and the mayor, if he's watching, you know, whatever, thank you guys for the time you spent on that. That was a lot of work.
Thank you.
Working together with those guys. We appreciate their work and yours very much.
So what does the platinum plan give you? For what, what does this give you?
All the services they have today, so.
Right, but what is, it's beyond just dispatch, so what else?
Dispatch, they get command, CAD systems, so we also keep track of all their records for them, keep track of their mobile devices, and so they have, we can see where their vehicles are at and track all those things for them. I'm sure there's other things that I'm forgetting, but those are the big ones.
Right, and then we keep all of the records.
Yeah, we have all the records in our, yes, in our databases.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion from the council? From the public? If not, your vote, please. That passes eight zero. Resolution 7570, executing the forbearance agreement and any and all other documents necessary between the city, the paddock LLC, and RIC Paddock STCI LLC, for the city to forbear from exercising certain of its rights and remedies with respect to the loan until a certain date as set forth in said forbearance agreement.
I move that resolution 7570 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Discussion, Tobias?
All right, so the Kensington, right, we transfer that off paddock. So Hoppy's, they're redeveloping the place. Part of their funding mechanism is for historic tax credits. I don't know how familiar you are with historic tax credits, but generally what happens is those then also end up being sold to a third party who can use those historic tax credits on their actual tax returns. So in this case, what is happening is Hoppy's investor is RIC Paddock STCI LLC. I don't know what all that stands for, but that's their investor who is buying the historic tax credits. They do, they, RIC Paddock does not want anybody to foreclose on Hoppy during the term that they are using the historic tax credits because that causes them a lot of heartache on their side when it comes to their tax return. So what they're asking for the city to do is forbear or prevent foreclosure on our LB840 loan for a term which works out to be about eight years. It is after substantial completion of the building, an additional 60 months. Substantial completion of the building, there's, there are long, statutory regulations that kind of explains, but that's the easiest way to think of it, substantial completion of the building. Now, normally, you don't want to forbear your ability to foreclose on a particular loan. However, in this loan, a couple of things you remember. One, Hoppy has to meet certain requirements before they get any money for that year. So if they simply don't meet those requirements, we don't give them any more money, right? Two, under our agreement with them, Hoppy technically can't default until the ninth year. They may not get any payments from year one through year eight, but they can't default until the ninth year. So in essence, you're agreeing not to foreclose on an agreement that you really can't foreclose on until the ninth year anyhow, but it's paperwork that the investor needs to make sure that they feel comfortable before they invest in this project and make money available for Hoppy so they can proceed.
Discussion, clear?
I enjoy your picture.
Yeah, let me, yeah, let me pick that all apart. You should have had a whiteboard, a diagram on that.
Is there any other discussion from the council? From the public? If not, your vote, please. That passes eight and zero. There is no ordinances tonight. Move to public forums. Is anybody here for the public forum for discuss, an item for the council to discuss at a later date? If not, we'll move on to discussion and reports. First discussion will be on Dempster's asbestos removal to McGill Asbestos Abatement LLC for the amount of $148,750.
I move that the bid for Dempster's asbestos removal be awarded to McGill Asbestos Abatement LLC in the amount of $148,750.
Second.
Okay, so I think everybody's familiar with the Dempster's site itself.
Tobias, just.
Yeah.
So I'd like you to break this down in a couple of different things. So first of all, can you discuss how we arrived at this bid process? And what the thought process was going forward and how we arrived at that? And then secondly, what, what were, what you have requested of Jason and the street department? And how, and what they're doing? The people on the Dempsters Committee, Gary and Dwayne and Alex and I are all aware, because I've kept them all abreast, but I asked you to, I asked him to take this off the consent agenda that were normally set so he could discuss this and explain it to everybody and the public as well at the same time. So if you do both of those things, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. If I miss something, let me know.
I will. I, well, I don't know, after you took this last thing apart, I don't know if I'll be able to keep up on the other one, so.
So everybody's familiar, obviously, with what happened down at Dempsters here a couple of months ago. Between that, the fire that occurred there, and then the city's acquisition of the buildings that face Highway 77, there became an opportunity for the city to acquire some grant funds to remove asbestos from Dempsters. One of the requirements of the grant was you had to own the building. That's what kind of held us up for moving forward at that time. So we don't have ownership, so we started the process of looking at asbestos abatement, and we're working on that grant application as we speak. But one of the requirements in there is that you have to go out for bids. And knowing that the grant was limited to $10,000 per building, per project. And so there's a way you could split it up. What we did is we went out for bids on several different options. So we kind of packaged a couple of different buildings together in different ways to see how we could maximize the grant funding. And then we also said, hey, while you guys are down here, why don't you give us a number to remove all the asbestos in the building? We had a previous report done, oh, five, six years ago as part of the investigations down there, which gave us a number of about a half million dollars. But let's, just while you guys are here, let's, let's see what they come in with. So we went through that process, we had pre-bid meetings, we did walkthroughs with different contractors, and we ended up with seven contractors that came down and submitted bids for this. And when looking at them, the low bid to remove all the asbestos in the building, now, there's an asterisk there, and we'll come back to that one, but the low bid to remove all the asbestos was by McGill for $148,750. The high bid was $500,000 again, and so it was right back up to where we thought. But there were several bidders right around this number. So that's how we kind of went through the process, is how we got to McGill. McGill's a certified asbestos removal company, all seven of them that bid. You have to be state-certified, so they were all qualified. Now, items that will not be removed as part of their bid. One is the roofs. The roofs have some asbestos layer on them covered in tar, and they can't take that off without taking off the roof. It was kind of hard to stand on the roof, take the roof off. And so they said for safety concerns, none of these seven contractors said that they would do that. So that will be removed during demolition. When it comes time for actual demolition, the contractor will just remove the roof, separate that from the rest of the debris, and be handled at that time. The second item that's not included in this bid are, there are some windows. Some of the windows have some window glazing around them that has asbestos. And the only way to reach those is by being on the roof. And so you see the first comment that they're not willing to get on the roof. And so, again, they're not willing to remove those windows with this particular bid. And then the last thing that's not included in this bid is the landfill fees. So we will, yes, we do pay landfill fees because the landfill's owned by Boswell, it's a separate legal entity within the city. So we will also have additional landfill fees for this removal. McGill says that they can start late June, and they say this work can get done in about two to three months is kind of what they've anticipating. So that's kind of the process we went through, how we got to this particular one. Now, with our talks to the street department since the fire and after the 30 days passed, and we've talked to EPA and NDEE and Indy, and all the other acronyms that are out there, the street department has put a guy back there who's start working on sorting through the debris because, again, we have to separate out, after the fire, there were some, some of the debris ended up on the highway. And so we hold that highway, that debris back into the back of the building and left it there, knowing that we couldn't move it off-site. One, the landfill won't take it for 30 days. And two, we knew we had to have all the appropriate state agencies come down and investigate it. So we've gotten all those states taken care of. Now the street department's in there and they're separating all the asbestos that came off into one pile so it can get removed and handled appropriately. They're starting to haul off some of the bricks that came down, obviously, as the part of the building collapsed. I think they've taken off two or three loads so far of bricks, but they're starting to haul those away. And they're separating out the metal as best they can so far. Small pieces of metal are getting recycled locally. The bigger pieces, they're setting aside and letting the next contractor come in because those will have to get hauled to a different facility. They're just too large to be handled locally. So that's what they're doing right now as well back there.
When the, when he's done with the removal inspection process, does the state have to certify and make sure he got it all?
Yes, one of the things you have to do anytime you have asbestos removed is you have to have a third-party inspector come in and inspect your work and make sure it was done appropriately. And so that's part of their bidding process, they take care of that.
So you get the low bid sometimes, you know, make sure they do quality work.
Yeah, so, wonderful. The only thing I, the only thing I would add is that the roofs part of it, the roofs of the thing. So a few of us walked it today, again, several times now, you know, I spent a lot of time there. But some of the roofs, as the buildings have collapsed, you can see they are this thick. They are over a foot thick. There's layer of asbestos, layer of tar, a layer of this, I mean, they are this thick. And they, and you can see where the street department has separated from the building, not the main one, not where the fire has started, but the one adjacent to it where it collapsed. They've drug that roof off and they've started a pile there. And they've done a good job. They've separated, I couldn't tell, when walking today, I couldn't tell if they'd taken anything out or if they just cleaned the site up, but obviously they've taken their stuff off. But it's still, it's still a really big place. It's, but we're getting there.
The only thing I would note is, for the public, if you're hearing that there's asbestos down there, this asbestos is encapsulated in tar. It's not going anywhere, it's not getting out into the air, it's not leaking. It's, when you take it off, it's a big giant bucket of tar that is what's left. And so it'll all be disposed of properly, but I just want to make sure everybody doesn't think the asbestos is coming around the sky.
And that won't go to our.
That can go to our landfill, but you have to wrap it in plastic before you take it out there and then you have to bury it together. There's a process to it.
There's a process to everything.
Yes.
So when you say the building, of course Dempsters is multiple buildings. This is a bid to remove asbestos from the entire site? So the building that we all see and that caught fire, whatever part of it, so it includes that also?
Yes, I believe there's a map included in your packets. Back in the day when they did the first asbestos survey, they labeled all of them, A, B, C, D, E, F, G. And so what we have up here in your packets is the map, it will remove all the asbestos on those buildings. I believe the yellow buildings already been gone. The building S on the left-hand side, that doesn't have any asbestos in it. The red buildings are the ones that burned, hence they're red. And then all the rest of the asbestos removed from the rest of the buildings.
Right.
And that's the first step you have to do before you can demolish anything, is you have to have the asbestos removed. So.
Oh, it's a, it's a great amount to get all the buildings done, yeah, great.
Money comes from T, street general fund.
So great question. So this money will come from the general fund. This money will come from the general fund. This is a non-budgeted item. That being said, though, knowing where the council has had their goals, if you will, on this particular site, what we're able to look for is our sales tax are coming in higher than we initially budgeted, and our interest income is coming in higher than we initially budgeted. So those two line items with those additional revenue dollars are what we're going to use to pay for this cost.
Yeah, I guess the only thing I'd add is that you can't see it from the street, but we're working on it. And like I said, I was surprised today that, how much had been cleaned up. I mean, there's a lot more to go, but there's, yeah.
Just got to keep chipping away.
Eat the elephant.
Have we done any work with this company before on any of our other projects?
I don't know that we've done work with McGill. I've heard the name several times, but I don't know that they have gotten any of our other bids before. They're not the ones who did the school site, and they're not the ones that usually come down and do our little residential houses.
Did the ones that did the school sites bid?
Yes.
Other discussion from the council? From the public? Not your vote, please. That passes eight zero. The next city council regular meeting will be June 16th at 6:00 PM in the administration building.